I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're, uh, our fourth work session on the budget. We're going to talk a little bit or a lot about the capital budget tonight. I don't know if there's any prepared comments, if anyone from the administration wants to say anything to start.
Well, I can just.
Maybe go through it.
Oh, yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I just kind of recap, even though it was discussed in the budget presentations. You know, the capital for this year represents a town request of 1.1, 1,126,432 with a board of education added in of 396,200 for a total of 1,522,632. And we're proposing that 500,000 be used in terms of funding to offset that request. So that's an increase from the previous year or current year, I'm sorry, of 75,000, so a $425,000 increase that I had outlined in the presentation. And that is our starting point. I think there's, hopefully, we can provide you with enough detail on the items listed in the back of the budget book. I know it's a little bit small, a little hard to read. I'm struggling myself, but I think we can get through it.
It might be easier to look at page 12, 1 and 12, 5. The numbers are a little bit bigger. It's not in the same format as the small spreadsheet, but all the information is still there and a little easier to read, I think.
Do we want to, you know, do you want to go through each one of these? Does anyone want to just ask questions? What's your preference? I mean, I, you know, going through, I think I understood what all these are for, but if anyone has any specific questions.
Just two items. I just wanted to know if we could have some more specifics and what they consist of. And that would be the one right on the top, Discover Plainville Initiatives, and under Police Department, the building improvements. I do remember some discussion of the police station, building improvements, but if we have a few more details on that, that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, you know, the Discover Plainville Committee is looking at the marketing and branding aspects for the town. We're looking to cover some of what we anticipate would be, you know, some expenses when, with respect to the logo design. When we get to that point, we're going to, you know, put out a survey, engage the public, look for feedback, but at some point, you know, we're going to try and get some professional help along the way. And that's just, you know, a placeholder, a minimal amount, not trying to break the bank, but just looking for some, some professional assistance.
Okay, so it'd be mostly in sort of contracted services.
Contracted out services, right.
Thank you.
Correct. And on the second item, the building improvements, I believe that is for, um, yeah, the, yeah, you got more detail on that?
Yeah, I've been working with the chief on this particular project. So last fiscal year, there was about the same amount in the capital budget for building improvements. This is the second portion of the money that the chief had requested. It's for the conversion of a space on the first floor of the police department. Currently, there's a juvenile cell that's not being used, isn't used, and doesn't need to be used, given the layout of the rest of the department. There is a interview or training room that is small, kind of like an office area, and then kind of like an L-shaped space. Essentially, this entire area, he's looking to create a roll call room, which he thinks would be more conducive to the needs of the department today. I understand that it's typical for departments to have roll call rooms, used for training, gathering the shift leaders and giving out orders or commands for the day. So what he's looking to do is a renovation in that particular area by taking down some walls and adding furniture to suit his needs for roll call space.
Sort of a renovation and refurbishing.
It is a renovation. Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So while we're on the police department, Chief Angeli had sent me, he called it a Police CIP line item summary and justification. It's basically about the vehicles. I know he had put in for three. From what I understand, it was supposed to be, there was supposed to be a rotation, two vehicles one year, three the next. He's only received one. Was it one since 2021?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I gotta look. No, actually, they were ordered in 2021, received in 2022. With the needs of the department, I think we need to push, push that back up to two, especially since he's changing, he's bringing in the $180,000 in fees. You know, he's, most departments use those fees to cover their vehicles. It's, you know, his fees are just going back right into the general fund and.
Yeah, no, I, at some level, I agree with that. And he has made a persuasive argument about the fees, as you have just mentioned, and I think that's something internally we're going to look at in terms of offsetting for future CIP. At least, I think he can cover at least one vehicle a year and, and with those fees coming in and still be able to help the fund balance as well at the same, same time. So I think, yeah, I think going forward, I'd like to develop a plan and, and sit with him and focus on, you know, really diving in to look at the, the fleet and whether or not, understanding whether or not it's the, the runtime on, on the cars or, or the mileage or both.
It's a combination, from what he's sent me.
Yeah.
It's, he gave the mileage and the idle miles.
Yeah.
You know, we've got well over 400,000 on quite a few vehicles that.
Yeah.
You know.
If I can make a suggestion, take the $80,000 out of the capital reserve fund and look at the ARPA money, if we can divert some ARPA money for the building improvements at the police department. The $80,000 would be almost enough to cover what, one vehicle or two?
Wow.
They're $48,000 apiece, I thought.
The ones that he's requesting would.
It would be outfitted.
No, they're not outfitted for $48,000, but you could.
It would be.
You can use ARPA money for building improvements, but you can't use it for automobiles, if I remember right. So I would remove the building improvement money and use that for cars and then try to divert some of the ARPA money. We still haven't gotten an accounting, I don't think, on the ARPA money yet, Michael, have we? As to what's left in it and where.
Yeah, I think we have got a good handle on that and we can incorporate that in the dashboard. I think it's in the last page of the dashboard for Monday. We can, we can drill down into that and get an update for you.
I was going to actually ask for maybe Monday night, adding an update on the ARPA funds and where we are and do we have a balance? Because I know we pretty much had accounted for, you know, or planned on using everything, but.
Yeah, I think everything is accounted for, maybe even oversubscribed. Rob might have a better feel for it, but we did move some things around, so we'll, we'll have to look at it. But I don't know that there's 80,000 to move for, you know, for building improvements and, you know. And I don't know if there's a, is there a, a prohibition on, on doing cars or is it just any, any capital?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
I was suggesting using the 80,000 building improvement money for a car.
Yeah.
And diverting ARPA money, which can be used for building improvements because we took some of the ARPA money for the police department the first time around.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
Do you have something to say, Rob?
I was gonna, I have to do the ARPA annual report through March 31st for, for the feds. And as I stated the other night, we have to definitively commit the remaining monies, excuse me, by December 31st of '24, so this calendar year. So there are still some projects, we designated the monies for projects, but some of those projects have not been approved by you as the town council. So theoretically, the money's still quote unquote available to re-target or reallocate, however you want to name it. And some of the projects that we targeted money for, again, we've nickel and dime, like the fire truck. So there are some funds available to do that. I think David's request that, you know, this is, it is something that probably can be done, with regards to ARPA anyway, the CIP is up to you guys. But, you know, for Monday, Monday's meeting, I can, I can drill down a little more to the dashboard and show you exactly what's available. Again, I got to pull this report together by, you know, sometime mid-April to get to the Fed website. Then at that point in time, we'll know exactly what is, what you got to do over the next, well, eight months. Because we'll have to, you know, definitely commit these monies by December 31st somewhere.
And we have to, by the end of the year, we have to commit the monies. We don't have to spend them necessarily.
Right, we have until December 31st of '26 to spend it. So it could be a two-year.
Yep.
Build out, if you will, if it's going to be a project of that nature. But if it's a purchase and, you know, again, we're looking at three, four years for some vehicles, you know, we may want to commit and get going on that if we're going to do something like that. But I think to David's point, again, we can do the, the build out.
Yeah, if we could for Monday night, even get a high-level assessment of.
Yeah, I can definitely pull something together.
You know, if we're looking to finalize the budget next Wednesday, that would be appropriate to get that.
Yeah, okay. That, that's easy enough. I can do that.
Okay.
And on the, with the chief sent and I forwarded to the rest of the council members, it looks like the vehicle that was left in CIP is the K-9 unit for 65,000. And then the other one he's requesting would be an administrative car for 56,000. They can strip stuff from the old car. So it would be, it wouldn't be, what, 120?
Or whatever that difference is.
121, yeah. 121, sets it on the next page.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I kind of like what Councilman Giedman's talking about with the fact of taking the working money that, that comes from the cars being sent out to do on road call and all that good stuff and designating that to help on a continuing replacement cycle, something that we've been kicking around here for a few days now, of getting prepared to set things up so that we can continually replace things. I'm believing that it's important that we do that. And again, I'd like to see, as he said, we get the two cars this year.
Well, I'm going to ask, you know, maybe even, you know, I don't expect you to have it tonight, but, you know, can we look back maybe five years? You know, what, how many car, how many new police vehicles have we purchased over the last?
Yeah, the purchase history.
Because I know we were on a, you know, we were on a good schedule for a number of years and I know we got off that schedule, but I, you know, maybe look back a few years and just get a sense of where we are compared to where we were. I, that would help me.
There's also, there's also an advantage to doing this and getting ourselves to where we're replacing cars on a regular basis. We, we don't have to keep the car in service as long. We can pass that car to another department within the town and it won't be as old and raggy as it's been. And we'll, they'll be able to, to, to use it to more advantage rather than, you know, having a no-value car at the end.
2021 was the last time a vehicle was purchased and that's, that's three years ago.
Yep, yep.
You know, and it's.
Yeah, honestly, in my head, I, I don't, that's not the way I recall it, but.
No, I think there's been at least one vehicle in that budget every year that's been approved.
It wasn't last year.
It was not last year.
It wasn't, yeah.
I'm sorry, there was one in 2020.
Well, not a patrol car, I should say, I'm sorry. That's what I was.
There's two 2022 vehicles on this list.
We do have a lot of black and whites now that we didn't have, so I have to believe that we've been buying cars.
You know, I don't.
No, there's, there's one gray, one, one black and white and a, or two, two black and whites.
Well, you know, why don't you find out? Why don't you find out for us and?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll pull it.
My feeling is if the police department's bringing in those fees, he can use those fees for the cars. If he has a down year, he's not able to replace it and that keeps it off of our capital. It's not a.
Yeah, I have it right here where.
I would still have to show it in capital. I would just show some of the revenue instead of all in the general fund. A piece of it would go to the CIP fund. So in other words, if we're going to budget 180,000 in general fund for the police fees and you tell me, you know what, take 60 of it, put it in CIP, okay? So we have a $60,000 revenue in CIP, we then could buy something, a police car for $60,000 and we only show 120 of revenue in the general fund. I mean, I can't show more revenue than I'm going to generate. So I have to break it up somehow. So you tell me the allocation percentage, we do that. And then that way, that can be utilized specifically for the police car purchase every year. No different than we do a town clerk. We have town clerk fees that go into CIP for the information the town clerk needs or, or documents, you know, we do.
General historic documents.
We, so we, we, you can see in the general, on the CIP budget, we budget $10,000 a year because some of the fees we get generated on a daily basis or an annual basis goes towards the CIP fund, not the general fund. So we could do the same thing with the police fees.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, and just looking at the FY '24, unless we added it after the fact, I don't, you know, looking at the list, I don't think we did do a car.
Did not do a car this year. No, we did not. In fact, the chief pulled it out because we prioritized, but, you know, essentially a dollar amount and he prioritized, I believe, the renovations, yeah.
And there were quite a few items.
So there was no car in this current fiscal year.
Yeah, but yeah, no, because I checked that earlier, yeah. We have.
All right, so I think, you know, if you could go back maybe five years, just, you know, assess what's been purchased, what hasn't, or what has been purchased, so we get an idea. You know, and as far as, you know, the revenue from private duty, like, is that more of a policy decision on our part? Is that more of a, just a decision on the administration's part? I don't know.
We would, no different than we come to you at the revenue estimates we went over last night or the night before, whatever night it was. Same thing, it's an estimate, here you go, this is what we're looking at right now. For CIP, you know, again, tonight, you're looking at what we're suggesting as revenue estimates to offset the expenditure cost.
Yep.
This would just be an added line of a revenue, you know, estimate against an expenditure cost.
Okay. All right, and then just, you know, the ARPA funds, we'll get an update Monday night. You know, and what I would say is we continue this conversation, you know, Wednesday night to, you know, what, Councilman Underwood's suggestion, you'll see where we are with the ARPA funds, maybe there's something we can do there. You know, certainly, you know, talk with the private duty, you know, we'll talk about whether or not we want to add another car in once we get all the information. I don't mean to put Councilman Hurley on the spot, but do you want to talk about dump trucks now?
Well, it's everybody probably knows by now, I'm, I'm kind of like.
Yes, Mike, if you don't mind.
I'm not picking on you, Mike, either.
It's no big deal, please.
I'm, I'm.
I got a bulletproof vest and I wear all my.
Good. I'm just, I'm just an old trucker that looks, looks at these prices and I'm like flabbergasted totally.
Oh, yeah, you're not alone.
And I'm, I'm really having a hard time. I've done some asking around of friends of mine that buy trucks and buy vehicles and everything and they seem to think that these numbers are really, really high. Have you by any chance gone anywhere other than the worksheet that we were, we were given, the build sheet that we were given? Have you asked other, other truck companies?
No, I didn't. And you know why? Because all the parts I have on my shelf are Max.
I said that very thing.
That's the problem. Once you start buying another vehicle, now you got to try to find parts for that. And the majority of the parts I have on my shelf are Max.
Okay.
That's the only reason why. But if I priced out a different Mac dealer, I'm probably going to get the same price.
Did?
I priced out, here's, for an example, I priced out, there's another truck in there, the six-wheeler. I priced out the six-wheeler from Gabrielli Mac.
Right.
On their, they also own a Ford dealership. And they, they did the Ford price for me and a Mac price for me. And I then went to another Ford dealer and got a price, there were a thousand dollars difference.
Geez.
So, just saying, I mean, just for flex. I mean, I have them right here if you guys want to see them.
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning what.
The numbers are what they are. I can't change them. It's just, yeah, I'm sure if I went to Freightliner, I'm going to get a cheaper truck, but you're going to get what you pay for, it's going to be on the lift most of the time. Other towns that I talked to that have Freightliner, International, saying it's in the shop more than it is on the road. They're pull trucks. They're cheap for a reason. That's the problem. That's what I don't want to have happen. Right now, knocking, we've had a lot of luck with Max.
I personally agree with you with the Mac being a dependable vehicle.
Right.
That's not, not even a question at this point. It's, it's the wheeling and dealing that I'm thinking about to, to get the price down from $320,000 seems like a ridiculous amount of money.
Well, you got to understand too, is that also the body is more than the cabin chassis. That's 165, but it's a stainless where before we were only buying mild steel. So I'm changing that path as well from where we were before. We only bought mild steel before and we had rotting issues.
Right.
Constantly changing chains, constantly buying rollers. I'm trying to get away from that now. And buy, buy a body now where I can re-chassis that truck twice for one body, whereas before we were replacing the whole thing. That won't happen going forward.
And just, I don't mean to interrupt, but how much to replace everything? How much was that the last time you had to do that?
That's what, I don't know, because I don't have those numbers. I'd have to have Rob do some digging because there's nothing in my files.
Okay.
That of a price. And I remember, I want to say it was 176.
Okay, so it's significant.
Significant difference, but also.
176 with the dump body?
With the dump body. And the, the body alone that I'm buying now is 165.
Right, right.
But it's all stainless.
Yep.
It'll never rot.
Well, and that's what I, I think the point is, is that, you know, there's some cost-benefit analysis to be done that, you know, if you can get an extra 10 years without having to do some of this stuff, there is a savings.
That's the avenue I'm trying to take. There will be a cost savings on our end.
Yep.
Further down the road.
Right, right.
You won't see it now, but you'll see it, we'll see it later. That's a, that's the return on our investment.
What kind of projection are you seeing with buying the new trucks? Are you talking 15 years' service?
About 15 years is about what I'm seeing from other people I've talked to and going to look at their stuff.
And then you would replace the cab and the engine and the framework?
Just the cabin chassis, not the body.
Take the dump body itself from the other truck and put it on?
Correct.
Be able to do that a couple of different times?
Correct. That's my plan, yes.
And that, is that something you plan on doing for all the trucks as they come up?
Every one I want to replace, I want to replace with a stainless steel body. So we can re-chassis that, that body twice as opposed to replacing the whole truck twice. That's my plan.
Well, I guess I can accept.
Believe me, it's.
I would do more, more than two of it.
Four.
Absolutely. And as long as I can still get parts for it, there's no reason why you can't.
And Councilman Hurley, you don't have to, like, agree tonight, you have until like next Wednesday. So you have like four more days.
But he wants to sleep tonight.
Like, I've got, I've got to just.
Believe me, it's insane.
I got to let it go.
Everything that I priced out, I mean, when I bought a zero-turn mower was $6,000. The one I priced off for the landfill was 20,000.
Yeah.
I mean, prices are crazy. I, I, listen, inflation, I get all. And I'll be honest with you, this body I priced out the other day that I got a quote for, when he quoted me this in December, it was 102. The quote here today is 106.
Can, can, if you, if you were, if you were to buy two right now, would you get any less cost?
I could probably get a better deal, yeah. Like, if I bought this one, this six-wheeler that's in there.
Yep.
And the other six-wheeler from the same dealership in Milford, I could probably go down and walk in Statler's office and say, listen, I want to, I'm going to buy two trucks from you. What are you going to do for me? You need to work on those numbers. You know, but we're not there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Mike, I know we've seen quotes before and approved them. I've been on the council several terms, but just to kind of refresh my memory about, it goes out to bid, obviously.
Yep.
About how many bids you usually get on, on this kind of item?
Usually two.
About two?
Yeah.
I know it's not many, but yeah.
Some of these are on Sourcewell, so I don't have to.
Mm-hmm.
So they're already.
Oh, okay, okay. And that's approved, yes, so we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, so through our purchasing code, we can use purchasing consortiums, which include the state bid, which is typical for when we procure vehicles because they have just really competitive pricing.
Right.
And this is the price with the state bid?
This is, the Ford one is off the state bid.
Okay.
The Mac one is not. Because right now, that's going to change. Right now, Mac is not on state bid, Freightliner or Kenworth, Volvo, Peterbilt, all state bid. In 2025, everybody's going to have a hand in the pot. Every dealership, every dealer that's in the area will be able to, you could buy, anybody could purchase off state bid, everybody will have a slot. And same goes for equipment. John Deere, CAT, Volvo, it's all going to change. All, that's all changing now.
So what we're, what's on here now is the first half of this truck.
Correct.
For this year.
Correct.
So you won't be buying for another year.
Oh, I won't see that truck for 16, 18 months.
But we're not physically buying the truck for another year.
Correct.
So then, chance it may be cheaper because of the state bidding?
It could, well, in 2025, it could be, which means that I can go revisit that and say, hey, listen, now that it's on the state bid, are you going to give me 20,000 off?
Okay, okay.
So the price may come down a little bit.
Yeah, but we still have the budget, the full price, but it, that would be, okay. I just want to make sure.
I can revisit that once that happens.
Right.
I haven't got where it's happening yet, but I hold it, I was told it's going to happen in 2025.
Okay.
Everybody's going to have, be able to, you could be able to buy anything off state bid contract.
That's good to know.
Yes. That's huge. I've done some homework on it and I'm just hoping it pans out that way.
Yeah.
Again, it's what people tell you, but until you see it.
Until it actually happens.
Yeah. Because it's been Freightliner and International for 30 years.
Yeah.
They've always been.
That's all the state uses.
Correct.
Okay, so then those cases, if you bought a Mac, you've had to go out to, to bid?
It's been outside.
But to bid, okay.
Is this quote from Sourcewell?
Uh, this is from Sourcewell.
And that's, and that's a consortium?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Any other questions for Mike?
Oh, is, you're going with the, with the update, updated body for the, for the Ford two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Everything?
Everything.
Moving forward.
That, that body's 100 and, uh, was 102, now it's 106.
Gotcha.
And that was from three months ago.
Gotcha.
And if it's, if it's possible, can we get an amount, the last time we replaced everything, a number?
It looks like 2020 is the last.
Last two trucks that we bought, big trucks, were 2004, 13 and 14.
Well, I'm talking about when you replay, like, you know, when. refit a truck, what that cost has been?
Oh, yes.
Way to get that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, your newest truck is a 2020.
2020.
Well, a 2021 GMC, but big truck, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mike? All right. I think you're free to go. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yes, you too. Any other questions on anything else on the list?
Mr. Chair, okay, just, um, another, just another, another item on, that was on the second page in terms of some more information on what it consists of is the recreation master plan. I think it's supposed to be master plan.
Yeah, typo, sorry.
No, we're not spending $60,000 on plans.
Massive gardening effort.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Where do you see?
Part of a beautification effort.
There'll be ficusism.
Sorry, my bad.
But on the other page, on the other page.
Master plants.
Look, it's plan, it's not.
Wait till John hears about this.
Buying a flower for $60,000, okay.
Yeah, we're buying a lot of flowers.
Yeah, it's plan, yeah.
For the planters downtown.
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Yeah, for them to undergo a look at, you know, the, the programming, master plan, location, facilities, the whole soup, soup to nuts and, and taking a look at that.
Yeah, now is that going to be contracted services?
Oh, I believe, yeah, we'd be going out for some consultant services and, and, yeah, sending that out. Or maybe, maybe even possibly off a state bid if we didn't have to. Hopefully, there might be on a state bid. We'd look there first.
But all of that would be for the actual planning process and getting professional services.
Professional services.
Contracting with professional services for that.
I used, um, I have a quick question about the tennis courts that were taken off.
Going there.
Oh, were you, I was just, you know, and I understand why they were, you know, not a priority. But one of the things, and Rosemary may be able to help me with this is, we were able to secure some grants from the state to improve our parks. A number of years ago, I think at the time, State Representative Bocus was a representative and was able to actually, we were able to do some infrastructure improvements in the parks. And I just, have, have we, have we tried to reach out at all for some of these things?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have and pending, in fact, I just sent an email yesterday asking for an update pending the bond commission approval, but we should be in the, on the list for $250,000 for sidewalks.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll continue to do that, you know, again, for tennis courts and any other thing that we can think of that has to do there.
And that's what I, I believe she did. There was like, you know, three or four specific things that.
Several, I think it was the fields, splash pad at Pateroski, but it was, yeah, through the bond commission.
Yeah.
Courtney had mentioned that, put it in a grant for, for the tennis courts. Did that ever get sent in? And was it, it was an idea of, you weren't sure if it was the right grant?
Well, we're, we're going to, yeah, so there's a, there's, there's an avenue, two different avenues for Plainville. And the eligible town is eligible for the steep grant process, but we opted out of that to go to Urban Act funds, which gives you, well, currently gives you more, and I think will still happen, even though the legislature is taking up a bill that would increase the cap on steep from half a million to a million. And Urban Act is, is, there is no cap as far as I'm aware of. So that would get, get you a, you know, bigger, bigger item or bigger, bigger pool of money.
Okay.
For Urban Act. So we're pursuing that and trying to put together a strategy to get something, not a strategy, we're quite frankly trying to figure out the process for Urban Act grants.
Okay.
And once we, you know, figure that out, we'll be putting forward an application to do that.
Okay. Or either, is either our state senator or representative helping it all?
Yeah, right, trying to, trying to unravel that.
And just to provide clarity too, the tennis courts weren't necessarily removed from the capital plan. We funded it last year.
I did just know, I was going to be.
Okay.
Followed this as we.
They were funded last year.
Well, we, we funded $329,700 in this year's budget.
In the current year's.
Current year's budget.
It was offset with grant money, which is the reason the project hasn't been completed because we're still, as the town manager had mentioned, navigating the grant process.
Gotcha.
The recreation director re-requested the money by doing, by approving it would have doubled it to 600 or 700,000. So this request isn't, you know, it's not saying it's not a priority. It's just recognizing it's already in the capital plan.
Okay.
So there's no need for an additional.
And we just have expended that.
We haven't expended it yet.
We're waiting.
Right, and we won't unless we get the grant funds.
Okay. And the grant funds, I, I, do we have any sense of when we will hear back on that? I, I know it's.
No, I've, I've got to get to.
I know it's at their schedule, but.
Yeah, yeah. The, I'm not, I'm sure when the bond commission will, will act and then trying to figure out the, I believe it's a rolling process for Urban Act, but that's what we're trying to pin down.
So I'll ask the obvious next question. If we get the grant, what happens to the 329,700 that we approved this year? Or is that up to us to decide what?
The, well, the, the, the grant funds are a revenue offset to that expenditure line item.
Okay.
So in other words, we're not, we're not taking money from fund balance to cover the costs. It's coming from a different outside revenue source.
Okay.
So again, we won't spend a penny of that 329 unless we get the grant for 329. If the grant comes in at 250, we'll, you know, spend 250.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yep.
You know?
Difference.
But we won't spend anything unless that grant money comes in. We haven't, you know, raised the money through taxation for that dollar amount. We haven't transferred money from the general fund, appropriated money from the general, we haven't done anything.
Okay.
So it's just kind of sitting there, waiting until.
Okay.
And/or if we get the grant money.
Okay.
And Dan just asked a, asked, underneath the tennis courts is the pavilion, Pateroski Park. That's a second pavilion. That's not the original.
Correct.
Yeah, that's where the old tennis courts were at Pateroski. We had just, when I was on parking rec, we decided the best thing to put there was another pavilion. And it's not going to happen this year.
We did speak to the recreation director about doing fundraisers and seeing if there were donors that could help going into possibly next year's capital to help kind of offset it.
And.
I have a, changing the subject.
No.
Just go up number 10 here. The carpet replacement for most of the building at the senior center. I see it's not being funded. I'm just curious as to why they're not getting some help there. Carpeting is kind of critical at a senior center.
So in this year's budget, we have half of that dollar amount allocated already. And the one line I'm above that various room flooring replacement, the half that's in this year's budget, I think at 18, 865, plus the 31,047 will take care of the majority of the building, if not all of the building.
So it's, it's definitely, definitely covered.
It's going to, it'll be in there somehow, some way, yeah, so. It was called almost like a double request.
So it's good. So it is there, just not here?
It's, yeah, yeah, well, over two years, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I was at committee on aging today. I believe the, the flooring replacement also covers the, the large blue room at the senior center. And I know Sean described in details all the, the problems they've had with that over the years. The finish wearing off, there's some sloping and a number of other issues. And I know that they're very pleased that that will be replaced, yeah.
And then I have some questions on number seven. Front page, page 12, one. The buildings and ground department, number seven. Seems like there's like one, two, three, four lines that talk about air conditioning replacements and repairs and so forth and so on. And there's no funding whatsoever for any of these air conditioning is, that's being shown. There's something covering that also somewhere that I'm missing?
Yeah, I believe we have something in this year's CIP for fire. I'm just going to try and find it.
For AC? I don't think so. It wasn't on, on this list anyway.
Yeah.
FY24. Now, could have changed it after this, but I don't think it did. And I probably would have taken notes on it, yeah.
I see that we have some.
I have it right here.
Pretty big, pretty potentially big things that could go wrong here with library, air conditioning replacement, fire department, AC, recreation building, air conditioning. And again, the fire department service room, that's four items that could lead us to a maintenance problem that could be costly.
Well, and I'm looking.
Yeah, we, yeah, I'm sorry. We, we have money set aside for ARPA that we did some stuff with the firehouse already. For air conditioning, the server room is one of the bigger issues in the firehouse right now, I believe, right? The library, we were told is not imperative at this point in time. It, it's listed as high, not critical at this point. So, you know, we're, I believe we asked Sunny to look into, you know, what could happen possibly next year, what we need to do. It's not broken right now. Essentially, it's not broke, don't fix it. I mean, maintain it, yes. So we are spending some money on maintaining it. But it's not in a major, it, it's not in a replacement mode yet.
Okay.
So all of these are just, again, kind of, it is, it is something that, you know, is going to continue to pop up on the list going forward. No doubt about it, but it's essentially kicking the can down the road right now because we don't, it's not do or die. It's not, you know.
Okay.
It's not a truck that we're putting our foot through the floorboard kind of thing, you know? It's, it, it will come back.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else with any questions or comments? Last chance? All right, hearing none. Yeah, I know we talked a little bit about this, I think, a couple nights or last night or a couple nights ago as far as where we're going to go from here. You know, we've asked for some information tonight. We'll get some probably Monday night. You know, we'll get the rest. And seeing that, you know, Tuesday is the referendum on the middle school that, that's why I was looking to move it to Wednesday. I, I don't know if anyone has any comments on finishing up on Wednesday. We do have several departments to still approve. If we could get a list of those departments before Wednesday night.
Yeah, we can have a queue for Monday, but I think right now it's unclassified, 8:30, the 8:40, which is a transfer out to the, the out funds, recreation, library, and capital allocation.
Board of Ed.
And Board of Ed, correct. Those are the only four, I believe.
So I would plan, you know, I would say if you have any other questions, you know, any council member has a question, you know, get it to town manager and we'll get all our answers before Wednesday. And Wednesday night, we'll plan on finishing up the budget.
Those, those four that, is there a reason we can't do those tonight? Is that, I'm a capital, I get, because we haven't.
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote on like the Board of Ed.
Oh, okay.
I'm not. I, I mean, if you guys feel you are, I'm, I was going to. No, that's all right. I mean, I just, I would like to digest some of the stuff we talked about last night. And I honestly, I didn't do that today, but.
You just, but you had said that there was several departments we still needed to vote on.
We can do that Wednesday night.
Okay.
If, yeah, if we want. There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I thought last night that we said that we would have the town manager go over the two.
Oh, yes.
Those two charts.
Thank you.
You know, I know that, you know, it just might be helpful to have it tonight, you know?
We do.
We can think about it over the weekend, be a little more prepared for next.
So I think I asked maybe the first night, just to get some idea in dollars, taxes for the last five years. So the town manager put together, I'm not sure who put it together, but.
Yeah, I got to give Rob credit for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
But, um, yeah, I don't know. You want to quickly explain it, Rob?
Yeah, I mean, I, I tried to, you know, with the help of our assessor in, you know, simplify this as much as we could. And, you know, this is the detail behind it, which you can barely read. So I tried to take this and simplify it for you. And essentially, I believe what the question was asked was, you know, what were values, you know, pre-reval? And where are we today? You know, so essentially, you're looking at two slides to cover, you know, four years. The 2020 GO, which is fiscal year '22. And then the 2023 GO, which is fiscal year '25, which we're looking at, you know, budgeting for next year. So essentially, four years. And I have the, I have the detail behind it. I have a slide for every year. If you go from year one to year two, year two to year three, or three. But I condensed it to these two slides for you guys to make it easier. And essentially, what you're looking at is on slide one, the, the five column sheet is, you know, what the values were on average for a type of property, single family, two family, three, you know, and condos. Again, that's the average value. It is not the, you know, every, there, there's 12 different components to each of these types of properties. So that's the average value. And the average market value, we see 70%, 70% assessed value. And what, you know, times the mill rate gave an average tax dollar for that average property value at that time of year in fiscal year '22 or the 2020 grand list prior to revale. The second slide I gave you updates that to today's grand list. The grand list that we're basing this proposed budget on the 2023 grand list for fiscal year '25. Again, same type of structures, single family, two family, three family. Average market value today, assessed value, what the estimated mill rate would be next year based on the proposed budget in front of you as of right now, which could change. What the average taxes would be. The difference, 23 grand list to 20 grand list. So I'll just pick single families because it's the top line. So between the 20 grand list pre-reval to the 23 grand list post-reval, there is, there is a rounding $599 difference in four years. Average change for four years, $599, again, around the 600, it's 150 bucks a year or $12.47 a month. So for the average single family house in Plainville from pre-reval grand list of 2020 to estimate, or to grand list of 2023, fiscal year '25, estimated mill rate, it's about $12 a month over the four year period of time. And then so on and so forth for the two family, three family and condos, okay? Over the years, their values went up or down. Some went down. There was actually negative for, yeah, I think year two to year three comparison. But again, over the four years, these are, these are the changes that occur. And, and average tax dollars. I hope that makes sense.
So going from this year to next year? If, if we go with this proposed budget, the way it is, we're to 33.01 mill rate?
Yep.
It would be about $150 for a single family home.
No, no. That's over the four year period. Okay, so if you wanted to go from year, this year, current year, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be what, in the 240?
It's 250, $250. But again, over four years, it's only the, well, only, it's, it's 100, it's, it's $600. Again, cumulative over the years. So it'll be 150 from year 2020 to year 2023.
Yeah, I, I just don't know because after revale, my taxes went up $100 a month for my warehouse.
Yep, yeah. And there, and there swings up, and there swings up and down. Again, and that's the average value of the particular type of property. It is not the exact type of property. Because that would be, you know, we'd have to do 17,000, you know, different values or, or at least a spreadsheet showing that. This, this is the average value for that type of property. Again, single family, you could have a single family that the average, you know, costs 300,000 because of, you know, what's inside, or it could, or it could be 150,000. It really, that, that's, that's the difficulty in trying to break this down because there are so many different components to the single family, to the two family, to the condos. You know, condos are, I believe lumped together as condos, but they could be three levels. They could be two levels. They could have a garage. They could have no garage. Could be detached garage. There are all sorts of different criteria built into these types of properties. So, I mean, yeah, yours, yours might have gone up, but somebody else's went down to get to the average. That, that's, that's the hard part to kind of, kind of put in front of you numerically because it's, it's really, it's a lot.
Yeah, but I, I did like the fact that you, you included a revale year in this computation because, I mean, it, there's really two factors going on. Whatever we said is the tax rate, but also when the revale, which was, you know, pretty sharp, sharply higher